Moving on to R5, discuss the grant agreement with Center for Tech and Civic Life, and spending plan is approved on April 9, 2024. This has been sponsored by Supervisor Jones. We do have some comments, so Supervisor Jones, if you're okay, would you like to talk briefly about it?
Yeah, let me briefly comment on this, and then we'll listen to public comment and then bring it back for a little further discussion. So this all started back in probably, I would say, December 2022. Staff was aware that the Centers for Tech and Civic Life awarded the county a $1.5 million grant. It was brought to this body on Tuesday, February 28 at 9:00 a.m., and it was R3, and that was to approve a grant agreement with the Centers for Tech and Civic Life and award Shasta County Elections a grant in the amount of $1.5 million, and it's with the expiration of December 31, 2025. So a motion was made, and let me get to my minutes. Who was present on that day? Our acting county council, Mary Williams. Our county council was Ruben Cruz. Then shortly, he resigned, and then it was Jim Ross. And...
You mean Mary Williams, acting CEO?
Acting CEO, Mary Williams. Sorry, Mary Williams. So I made a motion that this grant not be accepted. It was seconded by Supervisor Kelstrom, and a vote was taken on that, and that failed. The reason I did not want to approve this is that it's been, this type of money has been banned in 29 states. And in fact, recently, under oath, Mark Zuckerberg, who was the individual that funds the Centers for Tech and Civic Life, had donated the $400 million, has admitted, in, under testimony, that in fact, the money was used for partisan politics. And that's exactly why I didn't want this into the Elections Department. However, at that time, Supervisor Crye made a substitute motion to Direct Staff to draw up a counterproposal with language starting that the only use, the only use for the $1.5 million grant funding would be to purchase real property or to build a new building for the Elections Department, and to strike out the ability for the CTCL to have the sole discretion to request and return the grant funds. That's what the proposal that passed on a 3-2 vote, and it moved forward. Approximately a month or so later, I asked our acting CEO, Mary Williams, if the counterproposal had been accepted. I figured it would not be with that language. She said it had not. A few months later, I had asked again, and acting CEO Mary Williams said it had not been received. Those are the facts. That's what we know as of today. What we now know is within a month or month and a half, that, and 174 emails later, 174 emails, that that counterproposal did not go forward. And in fact, staff from the Elections Department and our county council rewrote that proposal, sent it on to the CTCL, and they approved it. Within a month, a month and a half, they approved it. And in these emails, if you read them, and they are public now, you know, here's one, here's one on March 30. This is from our county council at the time. Keep in mind, Ruben Cruz had just resigned, retired. Jim Ross come on board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Councilor.
So the emails are still subject to the attorney-client privilege. The Board would have to set an item on the agenda and waive the attorney-client privilege before the information within the email. I'm pretty sure we already did that, and I've already commented on these. These have already been made comment in open session. Yeah, there hasn't been. Chairman Crye brought them, and there was a, there was a request to make them public and made it clear at that time that the attorney-client privilege hasn't, hasn't been waived. And at that time, we have not brought an item back to do that. Okay, that's disappointing. So anyways, the counterproposal, what our counterproposal was not what the CTCL got. They got a different proposal. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we do a couple of things. First, we bring this back ASAP. It's already been too long. And put it into an actionable item for discussion, and make all these documents available, waive the attorney-client privilege, and make all these documents available to the public. That's my motion.
Supervisor Rickerson is in queue.
Yes, I was going to ask County Council Lamore. Isn't the ROV, that's an elected official, does she, doesn't she have the ability to make decisions on her own on something like this?
So the registrar of voters, under certain circumstances, could have their own council. If they're receiving advice from county council, the attorney-client privilege flows directly to the Board.
But, but my question is, can't, can't the ROV make decisions on, on grants when, when the DA or anybody writes a grant, they get money for it? They can decide how that's spent, can't they? I mean, because they are an elected official, we don't have any jurisdiction over, over just telling them how they can spend grant monies? Is that, is that true?
No. So ultimately, the county has policies and procedures on...
No. Well, but doesn't she have some flexibility? Because my, I've been told that she can make decisions on...
So she has flexibility so long the item isn't required to be approved by the Board? If it comes to the Board and the Board sets parameters out as to how the funding will be spent, then she has no flexibility beyond what the Board is directed?
Well, I'm not sure that's...
You're not sure?
That's not what I was...
Well, he's pretty sure. Here's the, Supervisor Jones, can I ask you this?
And I'm doing.
Okay, because we have public comment. I would like to, I mean, I'm, the, my, my thing is, I mean, bottom line, the Board voted for an action, and staff and council usurped our authority and did what they wanted. Nobody's here, with the exception of an election worker or two, who, or any of those emails. So my, my question is, can we, can we listen to public comment? Well, listen to public comment, let's bring it back. I mean, the, the reality is for me is I want to, there's, 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 there's nobody, there's nobody left. I mean, everybody that either knew about this or was culpable has bailed, because it's bad. It's bad. I mean, it's, it's, it's what, so, so I want to, you'll have your three minutes. So let's move on to public comment, we can bring it back. Okay. Up first, this will be set at three minutes. You'll have three minutes. Robert, Steve Amaral, Steve Unfleet, Rich Galardo, Laura Hobbs. If you could please get in queue, I would appreciate that. It'll keep us moving, but please stay where the gentleman over there from our security is to stay out of the camera view. Sorry, Robert, go ahead.
Good, thanks. "This seems to me to be a parting shot by Patrick Jones, poisoned the well on his way to, his march to the sea. Patrick, you're a failed candidate, you lost, and any malfeasance is the purview of our deputy, of our district attorney, not Dave, not Joe, and certainly not Patrick." So any, this, this is a distraction. Now, if you're going to try to do this, then you're, you're, you're way out of your lane. You're staying way out of your lane. And I would just ask the Board and those here to please remember that, you know, Kathy was an elected official, she had purview over what she was doing there. She sent a memo to you in April describing the things that she was doing and why she was doing it. And, you know, for you to make a big thing like you didn't know what was going on, you did know what was going on, as far as I can tell. And, you know, you were just upset, because you wanted to use the money in a way that was not beneficial to, to the county. The way that would have been beneficial to the county was using that million and a half as seed money, throwing in a couple of million from the county, amortizing over a few years so you could own the building versus paying rent to a private landlord. And you chose not to do that. Also, you made a big thing about Zuckerbucks and taking money from a Democrat. The money was free. The most, it was a million and a half dollars to be used with very small strings attached. That is, where, where they're going to be... Oh, quiet down. Shut up.
Please, please refrain from talking.
You too. Very, very small strings attached. And, you know, this is, because the Jones gang and the Crye gang, your ideology is, is above the needs of Shasta County, and you guys are wrong.
All right, Steve, come on up, followed by another Steve, followed by Rich Galardo, followed by Laura Hobbs.
Steve Amaral, District 4. I've been disenfranchised as a voter. I've been, taken the right to be represented by my county supervisors has been taken away from me. This is very bad. This is not a good thing at all. We work hard to elect you people. You guys work hard to get up there and get one of those chairs. We have fundraisers, we go through all this to have you people represent us, and these four people saw fit to give that the bird. I'm not happy. This is wrong. There needs to be serious consequences taken here. I think we, the people, should be able to file a class action lawsuit against these people. They, they circumvented our, our rights to be represented by our elected officials. And consequences have to come down. If there aren't any consequences, nobody will stop. This sort of thing will go on and on. We've seen it already. There's, has been no consequences for four years, the last four years. It's just unbelievable that this happened. For them to go around the Board and just do whatever they wanted to do. We know she doesn't like you guys. This is what she wanted to do in the first place, so she just gave you the finger and went ahead and did what she wanted to do. But I feel disenfranchised, and I think we have a right, as we, the people, to file something against this. We need to look into it. Thank you.
Steve Unfleet, followed by Rich Galardo, followed by Laura Hobbs, followed by Casey, followed by Ron Pember.
My name's Steve Unfleet. I'm from San Bernardino County. I analyze the election records that were part of the, the subject of the agenda, agenda item that was removed tonight. So I've studied election systems and processes and records extensively for over three years. After speaking to many people individually and in small groups about election data and processes, the typical response is glazed eyes and spinning heads. Our election systems, if you want to understand the entire process, are so complicated that even a genius can't understand the system. It takes a team of geniuses to figure out what's going on with all the electronics, all the networks, and everything involved in the, in the agencies that are above the county.
Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, this isn't with the item. Can we have this wait until public comment?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, can you wait for public comment for that? Yes, thank you, Sheriff. Laura Hobbs, followed by Casey, followed by Ron Pember, followed by Thomas Hildebrand.
Good evening, Board. I am very upset by the fact that this was pushed forward. I am, I was able to listen to the SEIR Summit, the S-E-I-R, Center for Election Integrity Research Summit, that was in May of 2023. This is the same group. It's funded by David Becker, a far, far-left extremist. This is also a summit where Kathy Allen herself spoke. The theme of this conference was basically all about how evil election observers are, and how everyone who's an election worker has been victimized by them. And this was the theme, the narrative that they were pushing forth in all the different states. So all the Secretary of States were there. Kathy Allen was there as an ROV, as an exception. Most of the speakers were Secretary of States, and they spoke at length about how awful these elections observers are to them. They called them J6ers, insurrectionists. They called them extremists, you know, the whole gamut skeptics. So this type of influence in our elections and our election workers here is not acceptable. It comes from, you know, these far-left people like Zuckerbergs and Soros, and they're funding the money in there. And then when that gets funded down to Shasta County, what happens is it influences the perceptions of the election workers towards the general public, towards our elections offices. This office of elections belongs to the people. Elections have to be public, otherwise they're not transparent. The law specifies that a canvas, the definition of a canvas is the public counting of votes. And what we have, and you've seen it in our local media as well, is everybody is parroting out this message, this narrative, that election observers are somehow evil people that are trying to distract or disrupt the process. This is not true. I've worked very hard with a lot of people who are very polite, very kind, very respectful, and try hard not to interfere in the process. But we, we have a right to observe. We have a right to meaningful observation. And what Kathy Allen has done is not right. It was not the first time she's deceived this Board. She also deceived the Board when she put forth the heart in her civic contract. She told you guys that it would not tabulate votes. That was a lie. It tabulates votes. You guys thought it was just for the disabled, and you're going to just have it in this precincts for the people who needed assistance. That was a lie. She's deceived you multiple times, and somebody needs to be held to account. Thank you.
Casey, followed by Ron Pember, followed by Thomas Hildebrand, followed by Bev Gray. If you could please get in queue, I'd appreciate it.
We, the people, demand accountability. This is time and time and time again. Testimony after testimony, lies after lies. The ROV, you know, she came up here and lied about the election machines. She's, they're lying about this extreme conflict, conflict of interest and did what they want. They keep spouting how they follow the laws, and, and yet they're disenfranchising voters, they're disenfranchising observers, which is extremely important, essential part of our election process. So it's up to you guys. It's your authority, your duty to uphold this election process by holding accountable the ROV's office for these acts of willful malfeasance to the public. This is about the public being disenfranchised, being thwarted, and our elections being stolen through real corruption. This is a corruption issue. Please, please do your duty. Please hold accountable these, these officials that need to be held accountable, or else we're just going to go spiraling down further, further from any trust in our election process. Thank you.
Thomas Hildebrand, followed by Ron Pember, followed by Bev Gray, followed by Sheri.
Yeah, my name's Thomas. Yeah, Kev, I remember a couple of months ago, you, you held up 174 emails and said something would be done. And so far, I haven't seen anything done. You guys have children, grandchildren. You have a good opportunity now to make changes. It's very important that you realize this is passing. It's like, take advantage of the opportunity. We're asking for it. I spent a lot of time out in this here, down a couple, couple streets over, and it's not all that perfect, as you guys think. But we people have been out there looking and trying to help and help. We need your help. You raise them up. We'll get to the bottom of this. You've been lied to. It's our money. It's our government. And take advantage of the opportunity, Chris. Join in with us. Thanks, Mr. Jones, I appreciate you.
Ron Pember, followed by Bev Gray, followed by Sheri, followed by Jim Burnett, followed by Dolores Lucero.
Good evening. My name's Ron Pember. Anyhow, the reason I'm here is, when I was not allowed to ask questions of the four people that were going to be chosen for the ROV office, you walked on my First Amendment rights as a veteran and as a citizen. And that's why I'm here complaining, because some of the questions I wanted to ask the four people that were going to be chosen was, are we going to be able to visually watch what's being done? And they stand in front of the people, from what I've understood.
Is it, is this about R5? Or is this public comment?
This is just kind of whatever's going on here, what they just talked about.
R5? It's about the CTCL item?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is why I'm, I'm complaining, because I was, and others were not allowed to speak when we were, because some of the questions I wanted to ask them, are we going to be allowed to, to watch what's going on in the election? So that's why I'm saying what I'm saying, because my First Amendment rights and others as well were walked on. So thank you.
Thank you. Bev Gray, followed by Sheri, followed by Jim Burnett, followed by Dolores Lucero, followed by Jenny.
Okay. How many states cannot accept money from CTCL group? I believe Joanna has sat on the Board. Is this not a conflict of interest? There is absolutely, there absolutely has to be transparency. There has been no accountability for multiple things. We are tired of the lies to the public, to the voters, and to the BOS and to the media. It's time we take legal action if we have to. Thank you.
Not, not seeing a Sheri, and again, I just have a first name. Jim Burnett, followed by Dolores, followed by Jenny.
Good evening. Thanks, Patrick, for bringing this forward. Accountability is just the foundation of good governance. So I say proceed with all deliberate speed this investigation. You can't have the people that are supposed to carry out directives in the wishes of the Board just give you the, the middle finger. Please do your due diligence and get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
Dolores, followed by Jenny, followed by Bob Holsinger, followed by Leslie.
Dolores Lucero. And the reason I'm saying my name is, is because I know the attorneys adjourn, the Attorney General's watching. The 174 emails, and this happened in 2022. Patrick, what the hell are you think you're doing? Trying to stir up the pot on your way out the door? Don't let the door hit you in the ass. Just go instead of stirring the pot, because that's what you're doing. You didn't like that you lost, and you continue to do this for the, for the public to keep on coming. You keep on saying lies, but it's okay. You know, you know why the Attorney General's here, right? Because all your lies, you guys continue to say. They're watching. I told you they were coming. I told you someone was coming. See this big complaint I filed against you guys? I asked urgent for the Attorney General to come in in the state, in the Secretary of State.
The CTC...
So I suggest that Patrick Jones learns to stop being bitter and learn to go out the way you came in with nothing, because you have nothing to offer. You've been on the council for a long time, and you've done nothing. You're here, you've done nothing. All you do is cause problems, and you think your ideas are better, but they're not.
Can we, can we bring this to R5, please?
Yes, I am. R5. This is R5. You continue to bring this item about these emails. The only reason you're talking about these emails is because you want Joanna and a silver platter. That's all. That's all you want, is Joanna to be fired. And that is your goal, because you've got your little puppets over here, you know, trying to get, make sure that they follow you, they make sure they do what you ask them to do. But you keep on continuing doing that. You're going down. And I told you that over and over. You guys think I was joking that somebody was coming down. I'm not, I don't see you guys laughing anymore. But if you continue saying lies...
I pay attention.
Yeah, you don't pay attention. It's okay, Kevin Crye. You could tell people not to pay attention, but you, I hope you pay attention, the Attorney General's here. Yeah. You think, you think they're just here just to come and see, make sure that what? You're a joke. You're also going to go down, Kevin and Chris. All three of you.
All right.
You go ahead and make a joke. I told you, I told you, Chris, a while back. These emails, you might as well forget about it.
Jenny, Bob Holsinger, followed by Leslie, is my last card on this item turned in. Welcome.
Hi. I guess it's good evening, beautiful Board. Some of you more beautiful than others. This is kind of a crazy thing to bring up after all this time. You're literally on the way out. You were the chair at the time, so it's just sort of funny for you to be like, by the way, I can't do what I was thinking of doing, because it would be impolite on camera and everything. I can't believe you're doing this. I really can't. I mean, why, this is literally just to attack Joanna, just like she said. And Kathy Darling Allen, not here. Jim Ross, not here. All the people that you're so mad at, you want to hold accountability, not here. You're literally just stirring up your people because you sit on a throne of lies. You literally just want to screw people over, because you're small and angry and lost and you're afraid to admit you lost. We support the election staff. They needed that money, they wanted that money. And she is an elected official who was elected by far more than any of you up there. Kathy Darling Allen won more votes than any of you. So if you're going to talk about how, like, you're disenfranchised, more people voted for Kathy Darling Allen than for any of you up there. Now, if you'd really like to put it...
Please don't respond.
Joanna Francisca is the true patriot in this area. She's the true person holding all of this together, while all of you are up here bickering about stupid crap like the civic life, whatever, and Zuckerbucks and whatever weird name you want to give it so that you can refuse money to the department. Joanna is busily doing the work. I think some of you up here really enjoy just getting the work done. Some of you prefer to complain. Personally, I think because of this, Patrick Jones should resign tonight. This should be the end. When, when Dolores said that they're here, the state is here. The DOJ's been here all week. He was at the commission meeting. He was here.
Jenny, CTCL.
Oh, yeah. Wow, I get to... Well, I think you should resign, because stirring the pot for no reason is ridiculous.
Bob Holsinger, and my last speaker is Leslie.
Good evening, Board. I can remember when this CTLA thing was first proposed to the Board, and if I recall, and I believe you will as well, there was a requirement on that, that we would have to turn over our voter rolls to these, into Zuckerberg's organization as a result of that, if we took the money. That is just ridiculous, when we've got 120,000 or so Californians in Shasta County that's registered voters. That went away, and next thing we know, we have, we talked about purchasing of property with that money, using that. And we submitted that back, or we were going to submit that back to Zuckerberg's organization, but obviously, it didn't happen that way. Instead, someone else got involved, and it wasn't our Board. It came around through the back door, and somehow or another, they threw something over the fence, and we did not get our property to put our ROV in our clerk's office in it. That's the kind of stuff that we have to keep our eyes open on, and we have to also recognize that and do what we can to stop things like that happening in the future. But it's just so sad to see that, because it would have been nice to have a building by themselves, where observers could see without having, being contained to an eight-by-12 piece of property that you stand in at the office this week. And I wish you guys good luck on this, fixing this, but man, what happened is just not right, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Leslie, then we'll bring it back to Board discussion.
Hello. Thank you. The Board voted. Staff purposely undermined the Board. That was talked about, you brought it up. Thank you, Kevin, for working and exposing things that the public needs to be aware of. Thank you, Patrick, for bringing it back up. Thank you to those on the Board, Chris, that want to see things exposed and want to see the public aware of what's going on. Thank you. Mary, thank you on your way out the door for showing the public your true colors and not wanting to expose this. not wanting to expose this. Um, I hope that these emails, I hope that you're able to vote to release the attorney-client privilege. If not, either way, tomorrow morning, I will be submitting a PRA from Mountain Top to get a copy of them. We will post them unedited on Mountain Top for everybody to read. Um, this was brought up in February. You've dropped the stack of emails. It was very, very discussed in detail, and never once did they deny their actions. So for anybody to defend it as they didn't do this or they didn't do that, they never denied the actions of trying to supersede the board and undermine your authority. So, um, that being said, um, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for always trying to expose everything. And now that Jenny's had her chance to show everybody her signs, I hope that since they are a disruption and it's against the meeting thing, that they are put away. Thank you.
All right. Jenny, would you do me a favor? Could you sit down? Supervisor Garman would like to speak. Thank you, appreciate it. Supervisor Garman.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Cry. Uh, I will be supporting bringing this back. We've had 10 of our 21 staff, uh, are no longer in that office, kind of like what you were saying, Supervisor, Chairman Cry, I don't think there's a point to, to continue to beat the dead horse, so to speak. Um, so let's...
Supervisor Garman, just to, just to clarify, 10 have left in the last, I believe, two years. Yeah, so it's not 10 of left.
Well, it was 2022 when this was, I think, originally discussed.
Somewhere in there.
Right. But we've lost 10 out of 21 of the staff. Majority of them are gone. If we continue to push this issue, it's, it's, I don't see any good coming out of this, only more hurtfulness and...
Listen, excuse me, Tom. Supervisor Garman, give me a sec. Hey, listen, I mean, this is a contentious topic, we get it, and especially it's on the heels of Tuesday, so let us just have our board discussion, please, please. Thank you. Supervisor Garman.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I just don't see the point to bring it back and rehash this issue any longer. Um, but I will, I just want to say one last thing. There's not been any voters of Shasta County who have been disenfranchised. Our votes have always counted here, and they always will. Um, and hats off to the previous ROVs, and hats off to Tom Toller. Thank you.
Supervisor Jones, would you mind if I jumped in?
Better, go ahead.
Okay. So I mean, what, what I, what I do, and again, this under discussion, what I, what I do want to bring back is, I, I, I want there to be a message that staff can't do this. Uh, our county council can't do this. Now, we have a staff right now and a county council that I'm sure of that this wouldn't happen, but if we're looking 10, 20 years down the road, there has to be mass accountability. I mean, look at closed session, look at some of the items we have. Um, this stuff isn't just popping up, this is stuff we've worked on for, since Supervisor Kelstrom and I were seated in '23. And a lot of it's heinous, but what we doubt, what we now know is what we thought only happened in Sacramento or for sure Washington DC happened and does, or not as much anymore to my knowledge, but happened for a lot of years here in this building for the Board of Supervisors. So I, I want accountability. I'm not sure, so I'd like to ask Council Larmor what we're, what we're truly bringing back in terms of what, if, what findings, uh, I mean, it, it's, it's obvious they broke policy, and there is some, there is some, uh, what's the word? Uh, there, there is, uh, county council has some, um, what would be the word, Council Larmor, like, they represent the elections office, but in this, it's obviously stated, they said this needs to go back to the board, this needs to go back to the board. It never did, and then it was rewritten and sent in some other capacity, which was not, and, and to Supervisor Rickert's point, like, that's, why are we even up here? If they're just, if other electeds are gonna just do what they want when stuff is supposed to have board approval? I mean, I mean, what account, I mean, I mean, that's what I'm asking.
We don't have jurisdiction or authority over other elected officials. We do not have...
It's not, I mean, we just taught, county council just said, it's not that we have jurisdiction, but when something comes to approval from the board to accept that money...
Okay, so I have a question for, uh, county council. So is, is it me, do other elected officials have discretion to bring items back before the board? They do have that discretion, don't they?
This item, uh, falls under a budgetary item, and the board holds that, the budgetary string. So an elected official has a lot of autonomy in a lot of areas, but the, the board controls the budget.
Well, but it, but it, but that's, the grant funding is part of the budget?
Ultimately, uh, grant funding is coming into the county's budget, yes.
But didn't we, didn't it come back before the board a second time, and we went ahead and approved it?
It did.
Yep. So the second time it came back, the board approved it?
Yes.
That's right.
Not what, not what we said in the motion to be approved. Chair, if I could. Supervisor Jones.
Thank you. So, so let's get a little more clarity here, Supervisor Rickert. Um, so this action took place, it started unbeknownst to any board members that I'm aware of in 2022. It came to our attention in early 2023, and the counterproposal was sent forward. I was chair during that year. I asked ultimately three different times, did the counterproposal get accepted? And, and I never got an answer. And, and so that whole year went by, the whole year of 2023, while I was chair, without an answer. And yet it was rewritten and accepted. And when I asked our acting CEO...
Jenny, Jenny.
I have no point to listen to this anymore.
Jenny, you're... Sit down. Hey, hey, you, you, you need to...
Sit down. Sit down. All right. You'll have to leave.
All right. Here's what we're gonna do. People didn't get enough attention as kids, so we're gonna recess for five minutes. We're gonna recess for five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, before you recess, can you give an official warning to the...
Okay, you bet. Before we recess, uh, will the two individuals, please seated in front, move, this is your warning before you will be removed. All right, with that, they are not moving, we are gonna be at five-minute recess. All right, coming back from recess, thanks for your patience. Uh, we have a motion by Supervisor Jones, uh, on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second for discussion.
Okay. Uh, is there any other, uh, board discussion before we take a vote? Do you want to restate your motion, Supervisor Jones, just so we're clear?
Yeah, so thank you, Chair. So, um, this motion would be to bring this matter back, um, this CTCL matter back for action at, at the very next meeting or the, the soonest possible, um, with, uh, and, and have waive our attorney-client privilege on the emails and any other documents concerning the CTCL, um, and then, uh, make a decision as to what direction we want to go and direct staff to that.
Okay. Supervisor Kelstrom.
Yeah, I think we need, uh, I think we need transparency, I think we need to see what exactly happened here, uh, whether the people are still here or not, we need to see what went on behind our backs.
Any, any other, any other board discussion? We'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, starting with Supervisor Garman to my right.
Supervisor Garman?
No.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Cry?
Yes.
Supervisor Kelstrom?
Yes.
And Supervisor Rickert.
Master, thank you.